Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and it's five o'clock. We will now call this meeting to order. Thank you all so much for being here today at this first meeting in the month of October. We'll begin with roll call, District One.
DeAndre Knoxen, District One.
Keith Love, District Two.
Elma Bowie, Commissioner-at-Large.
Dedrick Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner-at-Large.
Chris Sharp, District Three.
Jamie Clark, District Four.
All right, let the record reflect that a full quorum has been established. All seven members of the commission present. At this time, we will have the invocation, and we are fortunate to have with us today Pastor Terry Ray of Crosspoint Community Church here in Texas City. Pastor Ray, thank you very much. Following the invocation, we will have the pledges led by Commissioner Knoxen. And Pastor Ray, if you don't mind standing at the podium.
May we stand. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be able to come here today and handle the business that you have for Texas City here. Father, we are blessed to have the ones that are here, and Father, that is my prayer today, is you'll give them wisdom. Father, give them a understanding of how you move in our lives and how you move in the lives of a city that is alive and well and doing well. We thank you again for all that you've done for us. We thank you for that we have salvation through Jesus Christ, and that changes everything and everything in our life. Father, we come to you now, and we pray this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
And amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas pledge.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one safe, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, thank you very much. Pastor Ray, if there's any announcements or any news you'd like to share with the citizens of Texas City about Crosspoint Church?
Well, if you're not familiar, Crosspoint, we bought the old St. Mary's Church. It's been 12 years, it's hard to believe that. We've been there 12 years, and we're a diverse group. We call ourselves multi-denomination. We said everybody comes from somewhere, everybody has a background. And so that part of the town is live and well, seal kicking. We appreciate all the effort to try to upgrade downtown. We know a lot of good things are taking place there. So I was just talking to George, I've been here since 1982. I've got some of my young people that have come through when I was Coach Ray through elementary. So Texas City has been wonderful for me and my family. My daughter, she is the principal at Dickinson High School, and she's been there, she's in her second year there. Then my son, who came, both of them came through Texas City, is in Dripping Springs. And so God has blessed me. God bless you, I'll thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Pastor Ray, we appreciate you, thank you. All right, we are up to the point of reports on this agenda, and we will have four reports. Before I get to reports, though, I'm sorry, I do have a proclamation that I'd like to present. As many of you may know, but this month of October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we do have a proclamation that we would like to present in honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month that reads as follows. Domestic violence is a pervasive issue that affects individuals, families, and communities across the state of Texas. It's a pattern of abusive behavior in any relationship that is used by one partner to gain or maintain control over another intimate partner. It can include physical, sexual, emotional, economic, or psychological actions, or threats of actions that influence another person. And whereas in Texas, thousands of individuals and families are impacted by domestic violence each year. According to the Texas Council on Family Violence, over 71,000 Texans sought shelter and support services from family violence programs in the past year, with many more cases going unreported. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month, observed in October, aims to raise public awareness about domestic violence, educate individuals about the signs of abuse, and encourage communities to work together to prevent and respond to domestic violence. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Texas City, and on behalf of this city commission, do hereby proclaim this month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to join us in this observance by learning more about domestic violence, supporting efforts to help survivors, and working to build a community where everyone can live in peace, dignity, and security. In testimony where I have witnessed my hand and the seal of the City of Texas City on this second day of October 2024, signed by myself, Dedrick Johnson is mayor, and attested by Ramari Lee, our city secretary. Is there a representative here to receive this domestic violence proclamation? We did have a request for this, and I don't think she's made it yet. But nonetheless, even in their absence, we want Texas City to spread that awareness about all components of domestic violence, as well as those cases that go unreported. We'll have a copy of this, thank you. Our communications director will share a copy of that online as usual. Now we're up to reports, and we will have a report from Mr. Marcel, who represents our aquatics program and our Parks Recreation and Tourism Department.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Commissioners, good evening, everyone. My name is Marcel Fabalora, the Aquatics Coordinator for the City of Texas City. I'm presenting the aquatics program and some information on what we have to offer. Sorry, I'm a little bit under the weather today. Okay, so first up, we have some information about the Nestler Park Family Aquatic Center. So this season, we had a total of 78 operating days. Our operating days ranged from May 4th all the way up until September 2nd. We went weekends only from May 4th to May 26th, and we went back to weekends only on August 10th through September 2nd. We're closed on Mondays for training, as well as a deep cleaning of the facility. Next up, we've got some admissions statistics. So first up, our total admissions were 21,050, which was a bit lower than what we had last year. And we attribute that to the weather. The month of July was pretty rainy, for the most part, almost every single day was rainy. So that impacted our numbers pretty heavily, and usually that's the most busy time is July. And also this year, we had a change of our fee structure. So we raised our non-resident rate $4 and our resident rate $1. And that is due to last year, we were seeing more usage from non-residents than residents. So we raised our fees, and we got the desired effect, which you see here. We have a total percentage of 57% on the resident side, and non-residents being 43%. So we got the desired effect that we wanted. Next up, our private pool reservations. So we had a total of 38 reservations this year. We had one cancellation, which was a 100% reservation rate. Most of those went up over to residents. We had one non-resident rental. And then our total revenues for this summer. So we totaled 174,000. Again, that's a bit lower than last year. Last year, we had a very dry season, and it was extremely hot. So a lot of people were wanting to come out to the pool and have a day with the kids. So that's another reason why we had a couple of rule changes, and we changed our fee structure as well. Here we have our total operating days and total attendance compared to the last three years. Again, we had a very wet July and August, even September. For the most part, every single day, we had inclement weather. Next up are our private parties and our private party revenues. Again, every single year, we do a raffle to allow the residents of Texas City first pick over the dates that we have available. So they are usually booking every single day, and then whatever we have left over, we open up to public, and they get booked out by non-residents. Here we have our swim lesson program. So this, what we've been doing with our swim lessons, we've been getting all of our lifeguards WSI certified, Red Cross. So every single lifeguard is undergoing currently the Red Cross program, so that we can revamp our swimming lessons. And here we can see our total participants for each season. Currently, we're in our fall session, which we just wrapped up our first lesson, which is preschool. They just ended a few minutes ago. And then lastly, our natatorium. So we just opened the natatorium back up after a year of it being down due to repairs. And we're seeing a sharp increase in the usage that we got. So we're back to hosting our swim meets, we're back to having all of our different organizations that use the facility. And here, we just named a few. Our very first swim meet that we hosted was the CCSL Swim Meet, which had thousands of visitors come through, and thousands of swimmers participate in it, and that was a two-day-long meet. But yeah, that is my presentation for this year.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Marcel?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, this time, we have our next report from the Fire Department. We will hear about our fire services from our own Chief Sackrel.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. So where we are right now is we have 99 authorized positions and 98 filled. So the new station and all that stuff we've put together, worked on for the last couple of years, we're there with that. So our ethnicity and gender chart, we picked up some females, we're a little bit above the national average. The problem is, they're nice young, single females, and I have nice young, single males, and they want to get married, and city policy kind of classes there, so that number goes up and down. So what do we do? We do emergency response for fire, EMS, industrial response, water rescue, hazardous materials, confined space, plans review, annual commercial inspections, pre-fire planning, public events, neighborhood improvement services. We maintain the station, the apparatus and equipment, and we mow the yard, and we wash the truck. According to the police chief. Our mutual aid was down this year from last year. We expended about 48,000 or 49,000, which is a 30% less than last year. Last year was down from the year before, so that's good. Of the 87 fire calls, we had 58 were canceled and routed. EMS calls were down. And the mutual aid contract is on the consent agenda tonight for renewal for next year. Last year, we talked about the difference between mutual aid and automatic aid. Mutual aid is basically, if we got a unit, we'll send it, and if we don't, we'll send one as quick as we got one. And automatic aid, they get dispatched from the dispatch center, whether we have the unit available or not, so they have to respond. So we prefer the mutual aid. There are numbers between Dickinson and LaMarque, the numbers were both down in both areas, and those had been getting rather high, so that's good news. Our EMS collections this year, we get our revenue for EMS collections from our billing company, Fire Recovery. Collections go to Line Barger, Grogan and Blair, and then we participate in the Texas Ambulance Supplemental Pay Program, which is a third source. So our collections are up again this year. We were over 36% last year, our goal's been 35%. And the 23, 24 number, we still have September numbers to come in yet this month, so we will collect more this year than last year. Our five-year average is up 7%, so we've been doing real good. The firefighters do good at the reports, the billing company is excellent. So where we were when I took over 10 years ago was about $1.2 million a year average. So we went to work on that. The supplemental pay program, we're estimated to get 198,000 this year. You can see what we got over the last few years, it hovers right around 200,000. Neighborhood improvement services at a glance, we've had 27 substandard structures. Seven were remodeled and 20 were removed. We have 133 junk vehicles that were abated. We've done 726 high grass complaints with a 40% voluntary compliance, which is up from about 10% three years ago. So those are good numbers. Junk and debris, we've done 63, and we get about 63% voluntary compliance, so that's a good result. The magnet program has started its second year, so we have a class of freshmen in their first year, and a class freshman, sophomore, right? Sophomores are getting their EMS education, and the ninth graders are getting introduced to fire service. So another couple of years, we should have some people ready to graduate with certificates. District Four, we all know we opened Station Four, so the gray area on the left is District Four. And run numbers are up again, but I wanted to put in there that since we opened Station Four, it has responded to 965-plus calls. So we got there just in time. If you look, we started back at 2018, measured that, so we went from 198 in 2018 to almost 1,000 so far this year, in just a few short years. So we were right there. Even with COVID and all the hurdles that you all had to jump through, we got there. I always track the number of fire responses to vehicle accidents on I-45, and you'll notice, one, everybody wrecks at lunchtime. And two, every time they change the lanes, people have to learn a new route. We have experienced a lot of accidents, but it's been an interesting study to see what that would look like for an area. There you have your new fire station. I can't remember the date we opened, it was in February, I think, sometime. Your new Engine 44 is back, Medic 40, Ladder 48, and we also got Engine 33. So we're in pretty good shape, and we appreciate everybody's help throughout this room, especially up here at Adias. It's been a good year.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for Chief Sackrel?
Good job, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Yes, sir, thank you. You've done an excellent job, not only in the department, but especially with the Neighborhood Improvement Services, as we continue to kind of improve the neighborhoods across the city. This time, we are up to the section of public comments. I do not have any requests to address the commission that have been given to me, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have before you, on the consent agenda, Items A through I. If you'd like any of them pulled for further discussion or elaboration, you can do so at this time. I would like to pull I, just for some discussion.
Motion to approve A through H.
Seconded.
Motion has been made to approve Items A through H by Commissioner Bowie, seconded by Commissioner Clark. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I only had Item I pulled for further discussion, because we'll probably be seeing and/or hearing a little bit about this throughout, and it was in the newspaper, some comments about it today. So I wanted us to, just so I'll get a little bit more information as to what that is, from our city engineer and planner, Ms. Kim Golden.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. So I want to take a few minutes to give you some background about this in terms of what we're doing, and especially in terms of what we're not doing, because I want it to be really clear that the city is not committing to build the infrastructure. What we are doing to accommodate the developers is a very narrow, very specific change to the rules that we have about when a plat can be recorded. So it's very narrow, it's very specific. And so to get that, I need to give you a little bit of background of how we do it according to your ordinances. So according to your ordinances, a plat gets recorded as a final plat for a new subdivision after all the infrastructure has actually been built, inspected, tested, and accepted formally by the city. And what that does is, when somebody then comes in and buys a lot from that subdivision, ready to build a house, all the infrastructure's there, they don't have to wait on anything. And so that way, when a person, you know, a young couple, or you know, somebody that, you know, buying property is not something they do a whole lot of, they're resting and relying on the city to have protected them in terms of having all the infrastructure in place. And so that's the way your ordinances are set up. What was needed in this very specific situation is it's a commercial transaction, first of all. So you have very sophisticated businesspeople dealing with this, who do this kind of routinely. And what the developer told us is that to be able to close the transaction, they have negotiated with this grocer, that grocer required that they be able to have a recorded plat at the time they close the deal. Well, if we followed our regular procedures, then all of the infrastructure, which is basically the extension of Crystal View Boulevard from where it stops now, all the way to the frontage road, plus the water, plus the sewer, plus the storm drainage, would have to actually be built and in place. Well, they want to close in a little bit less than 30 days from now. And we can do remarkable things, but I don't think we can do that. And so what we have negotiated with the developer and with your approval, we will do, again, we're not changing the ordinances. The ordinances stay the same as to everybody else. This is just an exception for this one deal, for this one piece of property, for this one time, is that we're going to, we have a separate agreement with them that says they're obligated to build that infrastructure within three years. Again, the city's not going to build it ever, because that's not what we do. The developers build it, we test it, accept it, and decide to accept it. So the developer has three years to build it. They're going to give us a two-year maintenance bond on it. And they're also going to give us a completion bond now. In other words, before anything is built, they're actually going to put up a security so that in case something happens in the next three years, the city has the means to build it if they need to. But that's only a backup plan, only if something doesn't work out the way everybody's actually expecting it to. So in that way, the city is still in the position you typically have with your ordinances as far as everything actually being there before we make the subdivision. And again, these are very sophisticated parties that are dealing with this, so we're not putting like, you know, young homeowners or anybody like that at risk. It's just this very specific thing. The planning board is still going to do what it does, which is review it, review it, approve it. If it approves it on condition, then all the conditions have to be satisfied. The construction plans are all going to be reviewed and finalized. The amount of the completion bond will actually be based on a final pre-construction cost estimate based on those final plans. A traffic impact study is going to be, you know, finally approved. So we'll have a permit from Tech Dot for the connection to the frontage road. So all those things that could be contingencies will actually be satisfied before the plat gets recorded. But what's not going to be is it won't actually physically be built. So that's what, if you all approve this, that's what we're doing again for this one particular developer, for this one particular site. And the reason we bring it forward to you with a recommendation to approve it is that this is an anchor store. It's always been anticipated there would be some sort of name brand grocer there. And so we believe that the fact that it has moved to this step, even though it's not the final step, and there's still quite a few things the developer and the grocer have to get worked out, it at least is a step, and we believe it will promote, you know, further interest in the area. It's also evidence that, as we know, retail follows rooftops, and so we're getting the rooftops. And so it's just, you know, evidence of more good growth in Texas City. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Commissioners, anybody have any questions?
I do, Mayor. So if I understood correctly, if something falls through and they don't build it within the three years, you said Texas City will build it.
Yes.
Will Texas City own the building?
Not the building, the infrastructure.
Infrastructure, okay, I got it, I got it.
Yes, yes, sir, it's not for the building. And thank you for bringing that clarifying point out, because I wasn't very clear. No, this is a completion bond to build the infrastructure, to build Crystal View Boulevard, to build the water, the sewer, and the storm sewer. And we will build it, well, actually what we'll do is, Jack and his fantastic crew will contract for it, and they will build it, and then it'll be part of our system. But that is just a huge contingency, not something we actually anticipate ever happening, but from a risk standpoint, it is something we have to consider and make provision for. And then the other thing that we're protected from is that they all understand there will be no building permit, and there will be no certificate of occupancy, expected or issued, until the infrastructure is in place.
I'm glad you brought that up, though, Commissioner, because there are some citizens who often are misinformed, and there was some even comments in the paper, online version, where it says, well, the city doesn't need to, you know, build a grocery store on the feet, or the city needs to bring this, and I just wish everybody would understand that the city doesn't build grocery stores. We don't build them, we don't finance them, or any other type of business like that. But it's about making our city appealing enough to make them want to come and establish their business here. And I do want to give kudos, a huge thank you to Ms. Kim Golden for working with this potential developer and this potential business, because even though they did not necessarily meet what our ordinances require by their closing date, she works to establish this, what we're about to vote on, that protects the city and gives us some assurances that we are a business-friendly community, who is welcoming businesses and the growth, while still protecting the entrances, the interests, and the ordinances of the city. So thank you very much for the work that you've put into this, Ms. Golden. Any other questions, Commissioners?
No. Motion to approve Item I, Mayor.
Seconded.
Motion has been made to approve Item I by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Bowie. No further discussion, all in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Golden. And next, we have another item for you, on regular Item 7A. Consider and take action on the second reading of Ordinance Number 2024-23 for recommended speed zones on Loop 197, as recommended by Tech Dot, on the basis of an engineering and traffic investigation. Ms. Golden?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, this is the second reading of this proposed speed change. There will be a third, and that's why it's on here.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions? We did vote and approve the first reading of this on 197.
I'm going to approve.
Okay.
Seconded.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to approve A and B, that's the same thing. Can we amend the motion to approve A and B?
Yeah.
If you'd like to do that, there are two speed zone ordinances, Commissioner wants to take them both at the same time?
Yeah, I move to approve Items A and B.
All right. Motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve Items A and B, that's seconded by Garza and Sharp. All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, so let the record reflect that we will have a third and final reading of both of those ordinances, both of those for approval. And before I get to Commissioners' comments, I do believe we had someone who just arrived that is a representative to receive this proclamation, come on up, for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. You can come on all the way up here. You can come on all the way up here. All right, this is Ms. Jessie Rhodes of the Resource and Crisis Center. And we read this domestic violence, but I'm going to read the last paragraph for you here. Commissioner here? Thank you, Commissioners. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month observed in October aims to raise public awareness about domestic violence, educate individuals about the signs of abuse, and encourage communities to work together to prevent and respond to domestic violence. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Texas City, and on behalf of this commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens to join us in this observance by learning more about domestic violence, supporting efforts to help survivors, and working to build a community where everyone can live in peace, dignity, and security. And testimony witnessed by hand and the seal of Texas City, Dedrick Johnson, Mayor, and Ramari Lee, our City Secretary. We do want to present this to you, and thank you so very much. We read this. If you'd like to have a few words at the podium, you can do that. Introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what your cause is.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Hey, guys. Thank you so much for inviting me today. So my name is Jessie Rhodes. I'm the Community Outreach Specialist for the Resource and Crisis Center. I've been working in this field for about eight years. Came down from Oklahoma and now a Texas City resident myself, so I really appreciate being here. Domestic Violence Month is a very important event for me. It's something that affected me personally as well as my family, and it's what got me into this career. And it's really important to note that the CDC does declare domestic violence as well as sexual assault as a public health crisis. And us all coming together as organizations, as a city government, really does make an impact for our community. And I really appreciate everybody being here today. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you very much. All right, we're now up to Commissioners' comments. We'll start over here to my left this time with Commissioner Clark, since she was the celebrity last week, recently inducted into the Texas City Independent School District Hall of Honor from Ms. Jamie Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. It was quite an honor, and I was very humbled by it, and I appreciate it very much. But other than that, I don't know what else to say, so I have no comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Clark.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
I'm good.
Commissioner Garza?
Just a couple. I'll say a little bit, because it's probably going to go down the line. Last night's National Night Out was a really good event. The fire department, the police department, it was really well-attended. I don't recall having five or six National Night Out events at one time, one night. I think this is good. They're getting out there. It was really nice, especially the petting zoo.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you all. There were lots of events. I'm glad you were able to attend a few. Commissioner Bowie?
Okay, so Commissioner Garza has taken care of National Night Out. The food was great. We got full, and we said, all we need now is some dessert. We were blessed to have some yogurt with fruit and candy. So we had a good meal, and we had a nice dessert. I just want to remind you, because I saw her, I see her. How can I miss her? October the 12th, which is a Saturday, at Blocker Middle School, the Rotary Club will be hosting its Alzheimer Walk. And so if you haven't signed up with you and your team, I know that Ms. Barbara White would certainly appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Love?
They cover everything that I was going to say, so.
Commissioner Knox?
Yeah, my first National Night Out, it was great. Got to meet a lot of residents from all over the city. About to give a shout out to Jack and your staff for taking care of those ditches down South Texas. I went to visit a few residents earlier this week. They were very appreciative to, you know, you guys' efforts, what you guys were able to do. So, and it looked great. You took care of both sides, actually. So that was more than what they were asking for, but they appreciated. I appreciated. Chief Zach, thank you also for your efforts with the Neighborhood Improvement Services. You know, I've sent you a few emails and been able to drop by and see those signs out there. So the residents also appreciate that too as well. So just thank you for everything you guys are doing for the City of Texas City. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of what the Commissioners have already said. National Night Out was great. Lots of families, neighborhoods registered their events with the city, and we were able to go by there. And we saw bouncy houses and tents and oversized games. Some resident had a collection of animals that he brought out, a huge turtle that's about the size of this desk. I just couldn't believe the things that are in Texas City. But yeah, so the snakes and all of that. But it was great. It was really great to get out of your own neighborhood and visit people in other neighborhoods and see all the fun and, you know, introduce yourselves. And so thank you, Commissioners, for those of us who were able to get out and experience that. And I want to thank the police and the fire department for getting their staff out. The kids loved the big red shiny fire trucks, and the police officers were there with the dogs, the canine, and nibbles, and doing tricks and things like that. And it was just a great evening. Most of the time, the last, I think, three or four National Night Outs, I was working. I didn't, I wasn't able to attend. So to be able to participate last night was pretty good. So just speaks to the spirit of Texas City and the things we do on celebrations like that. So thank everybody who had a hand in that. I don't have any other announcements. We have a lot of upcoming events, and so I'm pretty sure some of the staff out there may have some announcements. And we will start with the blanket request.
So two events this weekend. We have our 10th Annual Breast Cancer Awareness Month. That will take place Saturday here at Roadford Avenue. That run walk, you walk it like, and sorry to make, it didn't start in the end. Registration will be at 7:30, although it's still in the direction. So we're looking forward to it. The second event is our train festival. That will be this weekend. That will be from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. That will be at the museum. So we will have seven additional model train clubs. That will be displaying their models. They would be throughout the museum as well as in the showroom. So I'd like to invite you out to the folk of the event. So if you show up at 8, you can run, be done, definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I'll be there.
Mr. Dennis Harris, Assistant Chief Dennis Harris?
Yes, just want to remind everyone, it is October. It's Fire Prevention Month. It's a great time to change your smoke detector batteries and also put the smoke detectors up that you always take down.
Thank you for that reminder. I was going to say, do I have a smoke detector? Ms. Smith?
Good evening. This Saturday, October 5th, also our 30th Annual Fall Sweep, Fifth Avenue, from Bay to 14th. And the city staff along with volunteers will be cleaning up not only trash, but also other debris along that way. And it will be fresh.
It's on Fifth Avenue, right? From Bay Street to Fourth Street? 14th Street, I'm sorry.
We're meeting at the entrance at 8:30. It's check-in and moving in at 8:00.
All right.
So we have to walk fast or run fast, if we have to do that part.
Run fast, come pick up some trash, and then go see the trains.
Tired already.
If you have any youth groups, church groups, Boy Scouts, or just kids in your family, nieces and nephews, bring them on out. We always have a good time with the Fall Sweep. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Oh, just one more. The tournament that they had at the golf course, this chamber tournament, was really good, Mayor. I mean, it was well-attended. I mean, talk about huge. That was big.
There was actually 500 players in both days combined. So the big one, we really enjoyed it. They had a jam with all those camp acted about their great performance.
The weather was perfect, right?
It was.
Actually, it was, it threw us for a loop Wednesday night, Thursday morning. We actually got two inches of rain, so we had to do park path only on both sides, the first one. But dried up quick. The second plat, we were able to get off the path on the back. I just spent a play a little bit, so it did work out well for the second plato the second day.
Good.
Yes, sir.
All right. Joe, you got to work on that next time, man. Or anybody else? City of Texas City staff?
That was a adjourn.
Well, before we do that, I want to, thank you very much. I want to say congratulations and give a kudos to our own Ms. Renee Edgar. This is her first city commission meeting, I believe, working it from beginning to end by herself. She filled in for Ms. Ramari, who's been a great mentor and trainer. But I want to thank, we didn't have, when Ramari does it, it always messes up. We didn't have any glitches today.
Look at that.
Had somebody come fix that. We had somebody come fix that.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All right, thank you.
She was well-trained, Ramari. She was well-trained.